The Transitional Justice Reconciliation Program, creating the Regional Transitional Justice and Reconciliation Commission for the Bangsa Moro and appropriating therefore have duly considered the same and have the honor to report back to the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority the results of its deliberation. BTA Bill Number 353 was filed at the Office of the Secretary General on 10 April 2025 this year. It was introduced during the first reading in the plenary session on 14 April 2025 and on 21 April 2025. It was jointly referred to the Committee on the Bangsa Moro Justice System and the Committee on Finance, Budget and Management. The Committee on Bangsa Moro Justice System held its first committee meeting with its newly affirmed members on 29 May 2025 at the Committee Conference Hall Karumba Building, Roshan Rites 9 Cotabato City. During the meeting, the committee discussed the ways forward towards the reports, bills and resolution. In line with this, a technical working group was created for BTA Bill Number 353, led to be led by Deputy Floor Leader, the Honorable MP Raisa H. Jadury, together with Vice Chair's Chairpersons, MP Noreda Miswari and MP Amer Saakarya A. Rahim and members MP Abdul Wahab M. Pak and MP Muhammad Nazir S. Ibil. Immediately after its constitution, the Technical Working Group for BTA Bill Number 353 had a meeting to discuss its timeline and planned activities. The identification of resource persons, particularly those with expertise in transitional justice and reconciliation, was also addressed during that meeting. On 18 June 2025, the Technical Working Group of the CBGS organized a brief orientation of transitional justice and reconciliation in Al-Nour Suite Hotel Cotabato City. The Technical Working Group invited Maria Victoria Maglana to deliver lectures on TGR with a particular focus on dealing with the past framework. On the following day, 19 June 2025, the CBGS discussed BTA Bill Number 25 authored by MP Lais Alamia during its committee hearing at Conference Hall of the Mall of Al-Nour in Cotabato City. BTA Bill Number 25 was earlier filed, was far earlier filed with the Office of the Secretary General on 19 October 2022, some three years ago, and now was, and then was jointly referred to the CBGS and CFPM on 17 June 2025. During the hearing, the committee referred the legislative measure to the Technical Working Group Bill Number 353 as it shares the same subject matter. The Technical Working Group on BTA Bill Number 353 and 25 initiated expert consultation in a series of public hearings in connection with the deliberation of BTA Bill Number 353 and Bill Number 25. Both legislative measures proposed to establish a transitional justice and reconciliation mechanism in the Bangsa Moro to address legitimate grievances, historical injustices, human rights violations and marginalization through land dispossession. These proposals are in line with the mandates of the Comprehensive Agreement on the Bangsa Moro and the Bangsa Moro Organic Law and seeks to promote healing, accountability and non-recurrence through institutional reforms and inclusive governance. In pursuit of its mandate, the committee undertook the following activities to gather inputs, receive position papers, validate provisions and ensure inclusive stakeholder participation in the review of the both, both measures. On 21 June 2025, the Technical Working Group on BTA Bill Number 353 and Bill Number 25 of the Committee on Bangsa Moro Justice System conducted a public hearing in Davao City with the participation of 21 participants representing civil society organizations, national and international human rights groups, government agencies, academic institutions, in the indigenous people sector and the legal community. Technical Working Group Chairperson Raisa Jadury presided over the hearing and underscored the significance of stakeholder inputs in refining the proposed legislation. Stakeholders expressed strong support for the enactment of BTA Bill Number 353 and 25, highlighting its potential to address historical injustices and institutional gaps in the Bangsa Moro justice system. Particular emphasis was placed on the bill's inclusive definition of human rights violations, which recognized transgressions committed by both state and non-state actors. They also acknowledged the proposed commission's mandate to implement programs on community engagement, memorialization, psychosocial support, institutional reform and the resolution of land dispossession. On 3 July 2025, a public hearing was conducted in the province of Tawi-Tawi. Representatives from government offices, civil society organizations, local leaders of the Moro Islamic Liberation Front and the Moro National Liberation Front attended the meeting. The public hearing was presided by the committee chair who highlighted the proposed commission aims to provide mechanisms for victims to be heard, ensure accountability for serious abuses and contribute to long-term reconciliation and justice in the region. Expressions of support were recorded from various sectors. AMILF Provincial Chairman Haji Ismail Pajiji described the bill as a vital step towards the full restoration of the Tawi-Tawi homeland and healing from past injustices. Commissioner Ranisa I. Salahudin of the Bangsa Moro Women's Commission for Tawi-Tawi and Mr. Idris T. Ini of the Ministry of Basic Higher and Technical Education likewise expressed support, particularly citing the potential impact of the measures on marginalized groups and vulnerable communities. On 4 July 2025, the public hearing was presided over by MP Muhammad Nazir Ibil. During the proceeding, stakeholders underscored the importance of strengthening coordination with local government units to effectively implement the proposed Transitional Justice and Reconciliation Program. Civil society organizations, women's groups and local officials expressed unanimous support for the immediate passage of the measures. Ms. Jubaire Raisaid of Basilan's Women Initiative Foundation advocated for the inclusion of peace and reconciliation education in madaries, community learning centers and alternative learning centers as a means of institutionalizing healing at the grassroots level. The Office of the Vice Governor of Basilan similarly emphasized the need for strong local partnership, noting that such collaboration is essential to the sustainability of the Transitional Justice and Reconciliation Initiative. The Moro Islamic Liberation Front, the Moro Islamic Liberation Front Base Commander Rajan Abdurrahman called for sustained advocacy to raise awareness on the bill among AMILF communities across the region. The proposed commission as articulated under said measure is envisioned to serve as independent body that shall facilitate the truth-telling processes, resolve land-related grievances, investigate past human rights violations and build institutional capacity of communities in advancing justice, peace and reconciliation throughout the Bangsa Moro region. On the 9th of July 2025, the committee convened a public hearing led by MP Saichik in Marawi City, Lando del Sur as part of its continuing regional consultation. Board Member Omar Ali Sharif of the First District of Lando del Sur articulated the urgent call of constituents to expedite the passage of the proposed legislation. The hearing was actively participated in by the, by representative of various sectors, local government units, various civil society, all of whom expressed full support for the immediate passage of the bills. Stakeholders stressed that the proposed commission is crucial in fulfilling the commitments of the Comprehensive Agreement of the Bangsa Moro, particularly its provision in transitional justice and reconciliation. The sentiments raised reinforced the pressing need for an inclusive and restorative approach in peace-building within the region. On 15 July 2025, the public hearing was presided by MP Tawakal Midtimbang who facilitated consultations with local chief executives, civil society organizations and grassroots stakeholders to solicit their perspectives in the proposed legislative measure. Expressions of support were likewise received. During the same day, in Barangay Kayaga, Kabakan, North Cotabato, the consultation was presided over by MP Muhammad Nazir Ibil, who reiterated the bill's intent to uphold the dignity of the Bangsa Moro people and mitigate land-related conflict. Strong expression of support were recorded from local government officials, civil organizations, Islamic scholars and stake, other community stakeholders. Kadayangan Mayor Duma Maskud expressed the urgency of addressing ancestral land dispossession, which he identified as a major driver of the conflict in SGA. Kapalawan Vice Mayor Arifin Magid also voiced support for the bills, noting their significance in acknowledging injustices back to the Marshallo era. The attendees collectively expressed the importance of institutionalizing mechanism for truth-seeking, accountability and inclusive reconciliation through the immediate passage of the proposed legislative measure. Mr. Speaker, during the same day, the final leg of the consultation in Cotabato City was attended by civil society organizations, representatives from the Moro National Liberation Front, the Moro Islamic Liberation Front, human rights defenders, local officials and sectoral leaders. Stakeholders consistently expressed the strong support for the immediate passage of the bill, citing its potential to serve as an enabling mechanism for long overdue justice and reconciliation, particularly for communities and families that have long endured systemic violence and displacement. The committee has received a total of 22 position papers, broken down as follows. Ten from E-mail, two from Tawi-Tawi, five from Basilan, one from Lando del Sur, one from Magindano del Sur, one Magindano del Norte, three from specific geographic areas and one hard copy. All position papers received were in support of the bill with 67% offering proposed amendments. No opposition was submitted. Inputs came from the broad mix of sectors, including the Bangsa Moro ministries, agencies, civil society groups and professional associations. After conducting expert consultation and a series of public hearings, Mr. Speaker, across various provinces in the bar, the Technical Working Group prepared a matrix consolidating all suggestion and recommendation from the position paper offered. Thereafter, the committee convened its second committee meeting on the matter on 18 July 2025 at the Committee Conference Hall Karumba Building in R89 Cotabato City to deliberate the report on the Technical Working Group. From 8 to 10 August 2025, the, the committee held a series of deliberations on BTA Bills Number 353 at Blue Lotus Hotel in Davao City, during which it finalized its recommendation to the plenary. The committee also discussed the financial aspects of the bills prior to submitting its report to CFPM. The CBGS and CFPM convened a joint committee on 12 August 2025 at the PMB Conference Hall here in the BGC compound and discussed the financial requirement. After thorough deliberation, both committees agree to 125 million initial funding for the first year of the Bangsa Moro, of, of the Bangsa Moro Transitional Justice and Reconciliation Committee. Now today, Mr. Speaker, I stand before you with humility and a deep sense of responsibility to report back to the Bangsa Moro Parliament. The committee report on the measure entitled "An Act Establishing a Bangsa Moro Transitional Justice and Reconciliation Program", creating for the purpose the Bangsa Moro Transitional Justice and Reconciliation Commission, appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes. As stated in section 5 of the consolidated bill, slide number 16 please. As stated in section 5 of the consolidated bill, this measure seeks to establish the Bangsa Moro Transitional Justice and Reconciliation Program, a comprehensive regional initiative designed to address historical injustices, human rights violations and the marginalization experienced by the Bangsa Moro people and other indigenous committees, communities. Anchored on the recommendation of the Transitional Justice and Reconciliation Commission constituted under the Comprehensive Agreement on the Bangsa Moro, the program aims to ensure truth, justice, reparation and non-recurrence through a range of mechanisms. These include providing platform for victims to be heard, contributing to the resolution of land disputes in conflict-affected area within the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region, promoting accountability to counter impunity, fostering healing and reconciliation, empowering local governments and partnering with civil society organizations to implement and monitor transitional justice efforts in the region. The program shall be guided by the following principles: It will be human rights-based, victim-centered, future-oriented, sensitive to the Bangsa Moro and Filipino context. It will be people-owned. It will respect diversity, promote meaningful participation of women in diverse identities, inclusivity, transgenerational, conflict sensitivity and peace promotion, do no harm principle, trauma-informed and intersectionality. In addition to its guiding principle, the program is composed of three components on three focuses: human rights violation, land dispossession and history, memory and truth. These areas will serve as the primary focus, foresight of the program's interventions. Of course, the program cannot be realized without a dedicated institution to oversee its implementation. Thus, the Bangsa Moro Transitional Justice and Reconciliation Commission, an independent body, is hereby created to design, formulate and supervise the plans and mechanisms necessary for the effective implementation of the Bangsa Moro Transitional Justice and Reconciliation Program. It shall have the fiscal autonomy and shall provide, be provided with adequate funding which shall be regularly and automatically released to it to finance its operation. The BTJRC is composed of a chairperson with three regular commissioners and one commissioner coming from civil society. So that's one chairman, three regular commissioner and one sectoral commissioner, civil society commissioner. All of whom must be at least 35 years of age, possess proven integrity and have at least 10 years of experience in areas relevant to transitional justice. In addition, all members must be descendants of native inhabitants of the Bangsa Moro or the spouses of such dependents. To ensure inclusivity, the Bangsa Moro Transition Justice and Reconciliation Commission shall at least have two women. So out of these five commissioners, there must be two women. Out of these five commissioners, there will be two lawyers. Out of these five commissioners, there should be two residents of the island provinces. Out of these five commissioners, there must be one non-Moro indigenous person. And then there should also be one alim in Syariah and at least one, of course, the one from civil society. The chairperson and the three regular commissioners shall be elected and appointed through the regular process outlined in section 12 of the proposed bill. On the other hand, the commissioner representing the civil society organization shall be appointed through a CSO forum. Since one of the core functions of the CSO commissioner is to organize the said forum, the bill provides that a chairperson and the three regular commissioners, once appointed by the Chief Minister, shall convene a meeting of CSO leaders. During this meeting, the CSO leaders shall nominate three candidates who shall meet the qualification, the same with the qualification as provided in the general qualification specified in the bill and this nomination shall be submitted to the Chief Minister for his appointment. The chairperson and the three regular commissioners shall serve for the full duration of the BTJRC mandate, which is seven years. So, once appointed, you will appoint for seven years. And maybe for another, for up to a maximum of 10 years if the duration of the Transitional Justice and Reconciliation Commission program is extended. In contrast, to underscore the independence of civil society sector, the commissioner for CSO shall serve a staggered term. The first appointed CSO shall serve only, for only two years. The second for three years and the third for another two years. In the event that there be an extension of the commission's existence, a new commissioner shall be appointed to serve for the duration of the extended period. For the compensation of the BTJRC, the chair will receive a salary grade of 28, while the commissioners will receive a salary grade of 27. The organizational structure and staffing pattern of the BJRC shall be formulated and finalized in coordination with our Ministry of Finance, Budget and Management within a month after the convening of the BTJRC. Now, let us proceed with the powers and the function of the BTJRC. The BTJRC has several enumerated general powers and functions as well as those specific for human rights violation, historical injustice and land dispossession. Now, general powers of the functions, it will act independently. It would have established, it will establish strong coordinating mechanism. It will conduct nationwide information, education, dissemination program. It can investigate, study and recommend measures for the resolution of cases of individual and communities adversely affected by the armed conflict resolution, serious violation of human rights and international humanitarian law projects that brought about massive displacement and adverse effects on the environment and outstanding land disputes in the conflict-affected area. Now, it can, it will also have the power to take testimony and receive evidence, exercise the power of content against those will disrupt and obstruct proceedings of the BTJRC or defy and violate its orders, determine the factors that contribute to impunity in the perpetration of human rights violation, land dispossession and other historical injustices and recommend appropriate actions to the Philippine government, the Bangsa Moro, the local governments and other stakeholders to dismantle the same, promote accountability, ensure non-recurrence and strengthen the rule of law. It will also ensure the delivery of the necessary interventions for mental health and psychosocial support for individuals in community with priority given to minors who have directly experienced or suffered adverse effects of armed conflicts, human rights violations, including gender-based violence and other forms. It will also direct other Bangsa Moro ministries, offices and agencies to provide support necessary in carrying out the mandates of BTJRC and in implementing the Bangsa Moro Transitional Justice and Reconciliation Program. It can call upon civil society, development partners, humanitarian organizations and academies for their assistance in promoting awareness of transitional justice and reconciliation in reporting cases of violation and injustice in contributing to an agenda towards peace-building and normalization and in developing a robust monitoring and feedback mechanism for Transitional Justice and Reconciliation Program. It will also coordinate with public and private sectors in the formulation of short, medium and long-term programs towards a comprehensive approach to transitional justice and reconciliation. It will also establish an archive of official records. This will also be further discussed later. Composed of documents, testimonies, artifacts and other materials generated from the conduct of studies and investigations in the course of program implementation and make this available to the public when appropriate, subject to data privacy rules and turn over the same to the Bangsa Moro Library Archives upon the dissolution of the BTJRC. It will also publish, publish periodic thematic reports as well as a terminal report covering its findings and recommendations, which shall be made available to the public. It shall submit to the Philippine Congress and the Bangsa Moro Parliament annual reports and proposed legislative measures when appropriate. It will also identify gaps and recommendations for the Philippine government to adopt, implement otherwise addressed, to fully realize transitional justice and reconciliation for the Bangsa Moro, such as not, such as but not limited to prosecution, witness support and protection, reparation, compensation, rehabilitation, restitution, institutional reform, vetting and lustration and public recognition and apologies. It can also, it also has the power, it is also authorized to accept donation, contribution, grants, bequest or gifts from domestic or foreign sources for purposes relevant to its mandate and function in accordance with applicable laws, rules and regulations, subject to the regulation, subject to government auditing rules as applicable. Now, there are three major, I, I see my brother here. So, yes, Speaker, so, so our main function, Mr. Speaker, will be human rights. Okay, ah, palapit na rin pala, sige. But basically, I think, Mr. Speaker, the details are already in the, in the bill. So, so as not to read the entire bill into the record, I will now request this august body for their indulgence for the lengthy of the introduction as well as for their, we humbly plead for your support that we enact immediately the Bangsa Moro Transitional Justice and Reconciliation Program Act. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Lord Leader, thank you, the honorable MP, thank you for presiding. Deputy Speaker, by way of manifestation, full copy of the committee report just read by our dear colleague has been furnished by electronic mail as well as hard copies have been sent as well. With that, I move to adopt for plenary deliberations Committee Report Number 164 pertaining to consolidated bills, BTA Bills Number 353 and 25 for approval. There is a motion.
Approval for plenary deliberations.
There is a motion to approve Committee Report 353 as reported by the Committee on Bangsa Moro Justice for deliberation purposes. Do I hear any second? Do I hear any objection? Ringan, the same is approved, so Committee Report 353 will be subject for plenary deliberation either today or in the, in the future.
Thank you.
Lord Leader.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. With that, as per understanding earlier, I move that we recognize the Honorable Member of Parliament Attorney Kitem Kadatuan to read Committee Report Number 172 pertaining to BTA Bill Number 325, otherwise known as Act Prescribing a Budget System for the Bangsa Moro Government. MP Attorney Kitem Kadatuan is recognized to report Committee Report Number 172. You are recognized. Now, you have the floor.
Audibila iminishaiton, Ajim Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Let me ask for the indulgence of my fellow members of parliament. Don't worry, napakaiksipo ng committee report na ito. Initially, Monday, this was 40 pages. Yesterday, this was 10 pages and now, right now, 5 pages na lang. To our honorable Chief Minister, the Honorable Abdul Rauf Sami Gambar, Imakakwa. To our honorable Speaker, Honorable Muhammad Swaeby Jacob. To the current Presiding Officer, the Honorable Jose Ay Lorena, Deputy Speakers, Floor Leader, Deputy Floor Leaders, fellow honorable members of the parliament. Again, assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Mr. Speaker, at the outset, let me state that I strongly recommend the approval of the BTA Bill Number 325 or the Bangsa Moro Budget System Act as embodied in this committee report with amendments. Let me also invite Let me also invite my fellow members of parliament to participate in the process to fine-tune this bill by interpolating and proposing amendments. Kailangan po maganda itong batas na ito. And I will not take it against you if you interpolate me and propose amendments, Inshallah. On behalf, with that said, no? On behalf of the Committee on Finance, Budget and Management, matapang ako na invite kay maginterpetate because alam ko hindi ako ma-interpetate today. On behalf of the Committee on Finance, Budget and Management, I rise today to sponsor and present Committee Report Number 172 on B, or BTA Bill Number 325 entitled an Act Prescribing a Budget System for the Bangsa Moro Government or the Bangsa Moro Budget System Act. At to sponsor but rather to report the committee report. This measure, as reported by the Committee on Finance, Budget and Management, represents a landmark reform in public financial management for the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region. It is not an annual appropriations law. Let's not make that mistake na annual appropriations law siya. It is a permanent legal framework that governs the entire budget cycle from planning, authorization through legislation, execution and reporting and oversight. It provides what the General Appropriations Act of the Bangsa Moro, the GAAB cannot. A coherent, enduring and legally grounded budget system for the Bangsa Moro government, Inshallah. So, the legislative history and committee deliberations. There was a PowerPoint pero mukhang corrupt, corrupt yung ano, yung file. But I will proceed, yung file yung ano ah, yung file lang. Yes, I, uh, the BSA was formally filed on August 19, 2024 and referred to the committee on Agus, August 29 of the same year. Following its reconstitution in May 2025, the committee prioritized this measure as one of the three urgent legislative actions. The Honorable, Honorable Chief Minister, Honorable Abdul Rauf E. Makakwa himself identified this legislation as a key priority, so priority bill po siya. The committee held hearings on February 18 and several other months, which included the presentation by the Ministry of Finance, Budget and Management, uh, legal reviews by the Policy Research and Legal Services and comparative studies of budget systems in Spain, Switzerland and Malaysia. The committee also issued a public call for position papers ensuring broad stakeholder input. During the deliberations, the committee emphasized the need for legal consistency with Article 7, Section 28 of the Bangsa Moro Organic Law, which mandates alignment with national laws, DBM and COA rules and fiscal coordination mechanisms. Importance and necessity of this bill. Honorable colleagues, with the Bangsa Moro Budget System Act, we can finally codify six years of budgetary practice in our region and introduce reforms to institutionalize transparency, accountability and fiscal discipline. Unlike the GAAB, which is annual and time-bound, the BBSA establishes a permanent legal foundation for public financial management in the bar. Yeah, it is a collision of separate circulars, budget circulars and budget rules. The BBSA is also a milestone in regional governance, Mr. Speaker. It ensures continuity, predictability and coherence in budgeting. It reinforces moral governance, aligns with national standards as well as international best practices. The salient features of the BBSA. Mister Speaker, fiscal autonomy is a foundational tenant granted under the Bangsa Moro Organic Law. The BBSA in turn is the legal instrument that gives this autonomy operational meaning. It ensures that every peso entrusted to the Bangsa Moro government is planned, planned with foresight, spent with integrity and accounted for with full transparency, Inshallah. Through this measure, we affirm our collective commitment to moral governance and responsive, responsible stewardship of public funds. The highlights of Committee Report 172. There are nine silent features of the bill. First, fiscal responsibility contained in Section 8, 9 and 10. It promotes fiscal responsibility and mandates the submission of a statement of fiscal policy, medium-term fiscal strategy, annual fiscal reports by no less than the Honorable Chief Minister. Section 77, on the other hand, requires a transitory, transitory plan for past implementation of the, the said law. Second, planning, programming, budgeting continuum. Section 16 integrates the Bangsa Moro Development Plan and the Bangsa Moro Development Investment Program, the BDP and the BDIP into the budget cycle. Section 16 also requires performance-based and past implementations of PAPs or Program Activities and Projects. Third, salient feature of this bill, parliamentary oversight and discipline. Mister Speaker, to safeguard the integrity of appropriations, Section 46 to 51 of the BBSA impose strict limitation on verment. Reallocation of funds is permitted only within the same ministry, office or agency and only among existing items authorized in the GAAB. It cannot be used to create new programs or increase total appropriations. This ensures that every peso remains traceable to its original legislative intent and that budget execution respects the will of the parliament who wields the power of the purse. Financial and budgetary information sheets are also required for all expenditure bill. Fourth, execution and control mechanism. Mister Speaker, the BBSA introduces effective execution and control mechanisms by institutionalizing the GAAB as allotment order, or GAABAO, GABAO. Policy under Section 36, allowing ministries to immediately oblige funds for personnel services and MOOe upon enactment thereby, upon enactment, thereby eliminating delays and streamlining operations. Section 45, on the other hand, authorizes early procurement and multi-year contracting, enabling agencies to prepare and commit resources even, even before the budget is passed, provided safeguards are met. In addition, Section 53 of the Act mandates the use of STA or Single Treasury Account, consolidating all public funds under a unified banking structure to improve cash visibility, control and efficiency. Together, these mechanisms reinforce fiscal discipline while empowering ministries to deliver results. Fifth, codification of good practices. Mister Speaker, as mentioned earlier, the BBSA codifies longstanding budget practices into law, ensuring consistency and institutional memory. It formalizes the budget call and endorsement processes, giving legal weight to the preparatory steps that shape the proposed Bangsa Moro budget. It also recognizes convergence, but convergence budgeting and the Unified Accounts Code Structure, or UACS, as official tool for harmonizing fiscal data, aligning our systems with national standards while preserving regional nuance. Sixth, transparency and reporting. Transparency on how funds are spent is achievable and found under Section 67, which mandates the use of transparency seals and requires all ministries and agencies to publish financial data on their official website. It institutionalizes budget and financial accountability reports, BFRs, and reinforces the role of the Commission on Audit in External Oversight. Most importantly, Mister Speaker, Section 68 and 69 promote participatory budgeting mechanisms, ensuring that the people of the Bangsa Moro are not just informed but also involved. Seventh, structured budget calendar. The BBSA sets clear timelines for submission, deliberation and approval of the GAAB found under Section 26 of the said bill. Eight, PFM Modernization and Capacity Building, Public Financial Management Modernization and Capacity Building. The BBSA embraces modernization and Section 61 aims to improve management systems. It mandates interoperable financial systems coordinated with the Bangsa Moro ICT Office, paving the way for digital governance and real-time fiscal monitoring. In relation to this, Section 13 of said bill also requires mandatory public financial management training and competency-based HR policies, ensuring that our institutions are not only equipped but empowered to deliver. And finally, ninth, contextual responsiveness. Mister Speaker, the BBSA allows for Sharia compliant investment and provides hazard pay for personnel in high-risk area. Ababawal and declared in Section 2, the BBSA affirms our commitment to moral governance in achieving a system of budgeting that is not just technical sound but ethically grounded. Key amendments. Mister Speaker, allow me to highlight the key amendments adopted by the committee to strengthen the bill. Also, there are reservations, uh, for proposing amendments, particularly, um, the Deputy Speaker, Honorable Deputy Speaker, Bayintan Ampatuan. But let me read those already contained in the committee report. Section 2F introduces a new policy statement affirming, policy statement affirming that all budget policies are practices which must align with national PFM standards without prejudice to our fiscal autonomy. This ensures legal defensibility and operational harmony with DBM and COA. Section 3 clarifies the scope of the BBSA, particularly its limited application to LGUs only to the extent of fiscal impact and disclosure obligations under the Bangsa Moro Organic Law. Section 6 creates the Bangsa Moro Budget Coordinating Committee, a permanent inter-agency body tasked with fiscal planning, expenditure ceilings and preparation of key instruments such as the medium-term fiscal strategy and annual fiscal report. Section 26 establishes a structured schedule for the consideration of the General Appropriations Bill of the Bangsa Moro, the GAAB. From first reading to final enactment, this promotes discipline and avoids pre-enactment as much as possible. Section 35, Paragraph C, tightens the rule on fund transfers, clarifying that funds are not considered dispersed until they are actually used for completed, expected and accepted outputs reinforcing accountability and fund utilization. Section 77 requires the MFBM to submit a transitory plan within three months from the effectiveness of the act, recognizing that key reforms such as the adoption of a cash-based system and fiscal policy instruments require past implementation and institutional readiness. These amendments reflect the committee's commitment to crafting a law and those who have participated during the committee hearings that is not only visionary but also implementable, legally sound and responsive to the region's evolving fiscal land, landscape. The commentary recommendation. Mister Speaker, honorable colleagues, the Committee on Finance, Budget and Management recommends the approval of BTA Bill Number 325 as amended. The BBSA, the Bangsa Moro Budget System Act, is legally sound, institutionally grounded and strategically aligned with the Bangsa Moro Organic Law and global best practices. The passage of this measure will mark a turning point in how we steward public resources in the Bangsa Moro. It is a law rooted in discipline, designed for transparency and built to last. With that, Mister Speaker, I move, or rather, submit, submit that the BTA Bill Number 325 as embodied in the Committee Report Number 172, strongly, uh, recommend that it be approved, Inshallah. Wa, wa bilahe tayfik wale daw, assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh.
Your leader.
Uh, thank you, Kompaniero MP Attorney Kit Kadatuon. Uh, with that, Honorable Presiding Officer, I move to adopt for plenary deliberations Committee Report Number 172 pertaining to BTA Parliament Bill 325, an Act Prescribing a Budget System for the Bangsa Moro Government, as read by the Honorable Kadatuon. Approved for deliberation.
There is a motion to approve Committee Report Number 172 uh, for purposes of deliberation. Do I hear a second? Do I hear any objection? Ringan, the same is approved.
Thank you, Honorable Speaker. One minute suspension.
One minute suspension. One minute suspension. Session resume.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. At this juncture, I move to recognize and welcome back to the floor the Honorable Jose Iribani Lorena, pride of Sulu and Tawi-Tawi, to render or read this report of the Committee on Ways and Means. Committee Report number one-seventy-five pertaining to BTA Parliament Bill number two-eight-six, otherwise known as the Bangsa-Moro Revenue Code. So move.
The Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means and Deputy Speaker, Attorney Jose Iribani Lorena is now recognized.
Thank you, Floor Leader. Thank you, Madam Speaker. I know time is of the essence and therefore I have to cut the four-hundred-sixteen pages report to five pages. Madam Speaker, I'd like at the outset to state that this report that I will be introducing to the plenary is a joint report of the Committee on Ways and Means and the Committee of Finance and Budget and Management. So with the kind permission and authority of the Committee on Finance Chair, MP Attorney Kitin Kadatuwan, I will be presenting the report with his permission. Thank you. Madam Speaker, I know that under Article sixteen, Republic Act eleven-zero-five-four, one of the major functions of the Bangsa-Moro Transition Authority is to drop the Bangsa-Moro Revenue Code. It is therefore not only a moral obligation, but a legal obligation of the BTA to pass a Bangsa-Moro Revenue Code. But its timing is of course dependent on the plenary, on the consent of the parliament. But let me state this importance of passing a revenue code. In the course of this struggle, the most important point for discussion was the power of taxation. Because autonomy, while it is limited by the Constitution of the Philippines, partakes of the nature of a deputized sovereignty. Hence, in the course of the comprehensive agreement on the Bangsa-Moro negotiation and even during the nineteen-ninety-six Final Peace Agreement, the demand for a taxation power is in the forefront of the discussion. It is for this reason that perhaps one of the taxation powers of the government has been given to us. I think there were four taxing powers that were given to us under Republic Act eleven-zero-five-four. But importantly, the sustainability of an autonomous region is dependent on its capacity to increase its sources of revenue. Not only dependent on an allocation granted by the national government, but by its capacity to produce revenue. Fiscal independence or fiscal autonomy in law, but more of fiscal dependence is definitely dependent on our ability to raise our own sources of farm. Or assistance from external, whether it be loan or a grant or an allocation like the Bakran, are not permanently there. Because it is set not only in the tone of a law, but in agreements and is dependent on the capacity of the other party to deliver. But sustainability of autonomy is dependent upon our own capacity, internal capacity, to raise taxation and at the same time raise revenue in order that we can support not only the governance of autonomy, but we can support our social responsibility in functions. Social responsibility also must be anchored on the capacity of government to tax from where tax should be collected. Because there are in our communities that may not be able to find opportunity for livelihood, but even under our faith, our responsibility to the big brother to support its community and the people beside them. It is this significance that needs us to reflect on whether taxes should be collected or not. There is an argument that how can you tax without a tax base? Unfortunately for those, we do not consider that the rich resources of our area, whether it is agricultural, land-based, marine, or mineral-based, or even strategic minerals, should be taxed for purposes of the benefit of our people and not only be extracted by people outside of the region. It is on this ratio that we proceeded to tax to come out with a Bangsa-Moro Revenue Code. But thankfully, before I assume the Committee on Ways, a good friend, illustrious Deputy Speaker, Paisalin Popoytago, our Minister for Transportation, is now His Excellency President of the Mindanao State University, had invited many experts to critique of the Revenue Code. And experts not only from those institutions which are in the forefront of teaching taxation, but even from our stakeholders, including our ulama. We have, from the preparer of this, be to the Committee on Finance, we have conducted ten focused discussions, discussions done by experts, criticized by ulama, and actively presented before our stakeholders. There are thousands of people who have participated in the deliberation of this tax code. Let me just be very brief. We have produced a committee report of four-hundred-sixteen pages, but we will not discuss it here. I just like to put on record that the soft copy of this committee report has been provided to all members of the parliament. Similarly, the bill which was prepared to us has been grinded very thoroughly by the committee, beginning from Chairman's purpose tagus time to overtime in order that we will be able to produce a Bangsa-Moro Revenue Code that is appropriately and based on the culture, practices, and tradition of the Bangsa-Moro. So I will not go into that details because time is not within us. We have also committed seven public consultations and this is all through the constituent local government units of the Bangsa-Moro. In these consultations, we have also received various various position papers and all these have been taken care of and considered by the Ways and Means Committee. My dear colleagues, I know we have already a data overload. So just let me just present a brief presentation if the secretariat is available or the salient pictures to facilitate the discussion. Salient pictures of the tax code. Secretariat, can you present it on the... Can you present it to us before I start explaining on those points, salient points? The tax code incorporates what we call tax neutrality function based on our understanding of Islamic finance. In this tax code, we are applauding Islamic finance and best facilitators to come to the region because we have provided in our tax code what we call the tax neutrality principle. What does this mean? This simply means that whatever is taxed to commercial banks should that be, should only be taxed to the Islamic financial institution. Because if you truly utilize financial institution principles and taxation, then Islamic finance will be taxed more than the commercial banks. That's just one picture. The other picture is the present jurisprudence on developing aware income incorporation to reflect current trends in taxation. What does it simply mean? That we have looked into the jurisprudence that has been decided by the Supreme Court on matters of tax, on where tax should be collected and where tax should be, what tax to be passed or by local governments and the national government be. What could be passed by our regional autonomy? Therefore, there is a synergy between local government taxation and our revenue code. Because in the past, the determination, for example, of what is a big tax, tax, the tax payments are determined by the commissioner of the VIR. But this has been outdated by the provision of our organic law, which states that the utilization of resources in our communities by corporations or not registered within our area should be taxed where the resources are being, are used and taxed. So this goes away from the original VIR secular, which was outdated or amended by the organic law. In our revenue code, we see to it that what has been given us under Republic Act eleven-zero-five-four are incorporated into our revenue code. So that's another picture of the revenue code. The other one is the treatment of national taxes within the BARB. There are taxes within the BARB which we have considered and this has been incorporated appropriately in our tax code. There are other features, but I, for lack of material time, I will not discuss that altogether here. But let me assure you that in the most appropriate time for for interpolation, we will be ready to answer all questions to be done by by the members of the parliament. And in any, in the period of amendment, this committee is open to receive all amendments and consider whether that would be beneficial to our people or not. Should it be beneficial, then we will consider. But the most important part of our revenue code is we have provided two important provisions. And this is the provision on the imposition of taxes for all foreign vessels passing the Sibuto Channel. In our own calculation, we underestimated that one hundred, about at one thousand the US dollars, we will be earning more. But there are more vessels coursing through the channel than what is provided for in our estimates. Second, under the National Tax Code, there is a ten percent research fee to be collected in all regulatory, by regulatory agency for regulatory fees. And it is stated that that amount is to be provided to the University of the Philippines for purposes of research. But under our revenue code, while we collect the same, but it will now be channeled to the Mindanao State University to support our research in the Mindanao State University. We are therefore bringing the money which is intended to provide for research for our area to the very doorstep of the BARB. These are some good features. There are also other features and this is the this is the revenue code provide for a taxation for halal and non-halal. We have decriminalized between pans collected from halal taxation and from non-halal industries. And this will be segregated so that we will be no commingling of pans within the region. That is Islamic feature that will protect all of us. Because they say if you take part in the halal pans and use it for your food, that will make everything that you take, partake haram. So these are common features necessarily that will make the autonomous region a distinct region. Because we provided for Islamic financial system picture and at the same time, we have provided for a segregation of the halal from the non-halal. But it doesn't necessarily follow that we will not be taxing the non-halal operation here. But there is the national government act that will tax them and that there would be a share, but that money will no longer go to the common pan because it will be segregated as non-halal pan for the region. So nonetheless, this bill has gone through a process and I think from the very start of our BTA, BT one, this was already introduced, it's a concept. And it has gone a lot of discussions by the Committee on Ways. And thankfully, thanks to the Committee on Budget Management Finance, we have jointly approved the committee report together. The Committee of Finance was also represented in all discussion in forum on the revenue code. All these are provided in our committee report. But for brevity, I just like to request it to us, the members of the parliament for your support to come out with a revenue code. But I'd like to set a circulatelia that we have looked into the finer points of taxation and revenue in financial fiscal management. But if there are good ideas that can be put into the law, we, the committee, is willing to accept and we are open for any amendment in the amendment period. Again, I will not prolong this, but there is a copy of the bill, the final bill, which is distributed to each and every member of the parliament. If you want to interpolate a specific provision, please look into the soft copy of the bill and if there are comments in the committee report, the committee report has been circulated also by the, by our committee secretary. Again, with all that, I thank you all for listening and I hope you will help us in passing the revenue code. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much to the Chair of Committee on Ways and Means for the committee report. Your Leader.
Thank you, Presiding Deputy Speaker, ma'am. With that, I move to move for approval of Committee Report number one-seventy-five to move to approve Committee Report number one-seventy-five for plenary deliberations.
There is a motion to approve Committee Report one-seventy-five with regards to BTA Bill number two
Two-eight-six.
Two-eight-six for deliberation. Any second? Any objection? Hearing none, motion is approved.
Thank you, Presiding Deputy Speaker.
I move to suspend, ah, one minute suspension.
One minute suspension, one long minute.
Suspended for one long minute.
There is a motion to open the period of interpolation for Committee Report 171. Do I hear it again? Do I hear any objection? Hearing none, the period for interpolation for Committee Report Number 171 is the open. Thank you, Honorable Presiding. Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. We have several interpolators for this afternoon. But at this point, maybe this representation request that Honorable MP Don Loong, Deputy Speaker be recognized first to interpolate.
The gentleman from Taguitalwi and Cotabato, the Honorable Don Loong is... Deputy Speaker Don Loong is recognized.
Thank you very much, floor leader, Mr. Speaker. First of all, I would like to commend this Bangsa-Moro Labor Code for its provisions on cultural and religious sensitivity, expanded social protection, and various provisions. But of course, we want to help improve aspects on this. So if the proponent would accept some clarificatory questions?
Yes, Honorable Speaker, the sponsorship is willing to accept any improvements, modifications for the betterment of this proposed bill, Mr. Speaker.
My first query, Mr. Speaker, is should there be a clash between the Bangsa-Moro Labor Code and the National Labor Code? Which one would prevail?
The Chairman of the Committee on Labor, Berespan.
Mr. Speaker, the primary law is the Presidential decree number 442 or the Labor Code of the Philippines. It closely follow the provisions of the Labor Code, including the outline being the national law on labor employment. But it is adjusted to a manner that is consistent with the beliefs, traditions, aspiration, and shared cultural heritage of the workers and employees in BARM. Further, the BLAB being the latest law than the Labor Code has the benefit of being updated per relationship and cultural religious and gender sensitive law on labor employment. So the PD 442 or the National Labor Code of the Philippines is supplementary to the Bangsa-Moro Labor and Employment Code.
So the key word there, Mr. Speaker, if I heard it right, the National Labor Code is supplementary and therefore the Bangsa-Moro Labor Code is the primary labor law within the BARM?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I agree with the statement of the Honorable Loong that the PD 442 or the National Labor Code of the Philippines is supplementary to the Bangsa-Moro Labor and Employment Code. What is not mentioned in the BLAB should be supplied by the... should be supplied by the PD 442 or the National Labor Code of the Philippines.
Mr. Speaker, in the period of amendment, I would like to propose aspects that will clarify the legal hierarchy between the national law Labor Code and the Bangsa-Moro Labor Code and provide that in the transition, transitory provision. Next point, Mr. Speaker, is the aspect regarding the Section 51 of Title VI, which provides for employment transition assistance to the informal sector worker. Mr. Speaker, may I be clarified what is the definition and scope of the informal sector worker? As provided in Section 51, maybe the Secretariat, Mr. Speaker, can be requested also to flash it on the screen so that the Parliament can be...
Secretariat comply to the request plus the particular section of the Bangsa-Moro Labor Code. Please plus that.
It is in Title VI, Section 51. Yan po nakalagay...
Transition.
Nakalagay po dyan na under Section 52 na... Yan under Section 51 as defined in the preceding section. Can we be enlightened saan sa proceeding section na define 'yung informal sector worker'?
Actually, the definition of informal sector economy is... there's no specific definition, but it is defined through enumeration.
Through enumeration. Mr. Speaker, can we show the Section 50?
Secretariat, please plus Section 50.
Mr. Speaker, the acronym ISW do not appear in Section 50. So maybe in the period of amendment, we can then specify that aside from defining the informal economy, then we also define the ISW.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I agree with the proposition of the Honorable MP Loong to specifically define ISW, the informal sector workers.
Second, Mr. Speaker, based on the definition... well, conceptual definition of ISW, will we have a projection on the number of ISW we have in the BARM? That is for the purpose of projecting the demand of the 2,000 assistance we will be giving to an informal sector worker.
Before the gentleman committee chair, Berespan, we have a baseline of the former sector workers based on the current data of labor in the BARM. I think before we can go to projection, you must have a baseline.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the principal author of this proposed bill.
The gentleman from Cotabato, MP Romeo Sema, is recognized.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Based on 2021 data, Mr. Chair, or less 12,000, Mr. Chair, the baseline entire BARM, including obviously the Sulu, Man Sulu.
What year?
2021, based on 2021.
Do you have the percentage increase from the previous year to 2021 for us to determine the projection as requested by BLAB? That's from the chair.
Mr. Speaker, based on that number 12,000, can we look at the definition of that PSA data? Because if we will base it on the definition earlier, it was all encompassing to include fishers, fish farmers, market gardeners. I would presume that it would reach around 3 million if that is the definition. But since we have a specific number of 12,000, can we be clarified as to what is the definition utilized by that number 12,000? Which will become our basis in defining the ISW as proposed in this law?
Chair or author, please.
One minute suspension, Mr. Speaker.
One minute suspension, session suspended for one minute. Mr. Speaker. Session resume.
Mr. Speaker, based on the provisions of this proposed bill, the MOLI shall issue the necessary guidelines to ensure that effective implementation, coordination, and monitoring of these assistance and support programs shall be subject to the preparation of the IRR by the MOLI. And if there are any suggestions from the good gentleman, the Honorable MP Loong, for the betterment of this bill, this presentation is very much willing to adhere to any improvements of this proposed bill.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. But I think the IRR will greatly depend on the scoping of the legislation, in which case we really have to define the ISW, Mr. Speaker, because based on the informal economy as stated in the previous section, if you include the fishers, that is around 40% of the population of the Bangsa-Moro of 5 million. If you include ilan po 'yung market gardeners natin, ilan 'yung habal-habal, baka habal-habala tricycle pa lang po, aabot na ng 200,000. My worry, Mr. Speaker, is if we do not define this clearly, we won't be able to project as well the budget that we will be incorporating in the MOLI to be able to... But I will lay that on the table for a while. Maybe in the future discussion or in the period of amendment, it can be improved. My next point, Mr. Speaker, is the provision that after two months... two months of when an informal sector worker is unemployed for two months, he can receive two months of 2,000 pesos. My question, Mr. Speaker, if our definition of worker ISW is a fisherman, a farmer, habal-habal, tricycle, sika drivers, I don't think these people have appointments or formal... formal basis of employment. So how then can we determine that they were unemployed starting the month before?
Mr. Speaker, if I read in full, Section 51, employment transition assistance, if you may allow, I will read the full context para 'yung sagot na determine the full text of the specific sections.
This is it, please accept.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Section 51, employment transition assistance. An informal sector worker or ISW, as defined in the preceding section, shall be entitled to an employment transition assistance of 2,000 pesos per month for a maximum of two consecutive months or until such time that he or she has found gainful employment, whichever comes first, provided that the ISW is registered with MOLI. Age registered with MOLI, age 18, but not above 6 years of age and not covered by the social security system or government service insurance system or not preceding the Pantawid Familieng Pilipin Program Assistance or Porpiis. MOLI shall issue the necessary guidelines for the implementation of this assistance. Which means, Mr. Speaker, that you have to register with the MOLI and the MOLI will determine the... determine the number and one is your age, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I will lay the issue on the table for... but reserve the right to propose amendments later on. Another point would be regarding the penalty structures. Are there criminal penalties defined in this Bangsa-Moro Labor Law? But based on my cursory reading, there is none. But I think we have to define clearly. It says penalty depending on the gravity. So as we will implement the law, which has a penalty of a range of 50,000 to about 5 million, what will be the logical measure for the Minister of Labor to impose a penalty between that range of 50,000 to 5 million? How do we define gravity? And where... what document will standardize the penalties? Because a lot of discretion will be open for a lot of red tape and that is not good for an efficiency of a law. So if we can provide clear definitions on the administrative penalties?
Session suspended for one minute.
I will resume. Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. Due to lack of material time and with all due respect to my fellow MPs on the floor, I respectfully move to spend today's, this afternoon's session until after tomorrow, same time, 2:00 p.m. Session suspended until 2:00 p.m. tomorrow.